2020 to order, I'll take a motion to open the meeting. Move by Teresa. Second by Trista, all in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you. On behalf of myself and the school committee members, I'd like to thank EB Cam for streaming this live meeting tonight. Thank you EB Cam. I would like to begin tonight, the standing committees on policy have brought forth two policies to the committee. The first is a policy ACAB on sexual harassment. And this is an updated policy based on federal guidelines. And I guess we could have discussion, do we have any questions for the policy subcommittee before we make a motion on this?
ACAB was something we discussed in our policy subcommittee meeting and we didn't find any changes to it or we didn't think that was fine?
Excellent, thank you. I would take a motion to accept policy ACAB. Move by Amanda. Second by Teresa. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous?
We have a policy in front of us here for face coverings. And I actually forgot to mention with the first policy that we're asking to waive the standard reading of these policies because there is an urgent nature to them, where school is scheduled to begin in several weeks, that these are policies that need to be in place before staff and students enter the building. So if there's any questions about that, let me know, but that's why we're asking for the urgent nature. Again, any questions or comments for the policy subcommittee on the face covering policy? Ellen?
Well, so EVC is also in the line, the supplemental one?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, I misread it. EVC supplemental and EVC FA face covering.
I have something with regard to EVC supplemental, and that it came out of our policy subcommittee meeting, where the question was asked if where each place where it says collective bargaining agreements, if we should also state that it needs to have, or it's up to us if we wanted to have it there, MOUs. So it would be collective bargaining agreements or and/or MOUs. And so it's, I did call the MAS C and they said that we could have it there, that it's up to us, it doesn't need to be there. That was something that Amanda and Trista and I had discussed. And so it's up to everybody if you want to have it there or not.
Superintendent, you can comment. My understanding is that MOUs are generally considered as attached to collective bargaining agreements.
Right.
So it would be included, I mean, am I wrong on that?
Nope.
Right. That's right.
No, understood. Understood. I feel comfortable moving forward with that, but that's always been my understanding of collective bargaining is MOUs are considered attached to the original document.
That's right.
Okay. Take a motion to accept both policies as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Teresa. Second by Ellen. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Unanimous?
Are we gonna, the handbook language in the face covering, are we gonna send that out separate to the handbook so that it doesn't get lost and shuffled out soon?
Principals, we had a meeting today and there will be an addendum to the handbooks that will go home with parents for signatures. But there will be addendums directed right towards COVID responses and COVID and what our procedures and policies will look like, protocols will look like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right Superintendent's corner.
So a couple of things, number one, today was opening day for a new teacher orientation. The new teachers were in their buildings, Mitchell School, Central School, Junior Senior High School. They met with the principals today, they got tours of the building, they got to sit, meet each other. Tomorrow's the luncheon. Dr. Williams is running the new teacher orientation along with the professional development next week, but I just wanted to welcome and let you know that the new teachers are here. It was very exciting to see them walking around and talking, they were mostly in their buildings today. I was at Mitchell School very early this morning. Did not make it to Central School, but I will tomorrow and today, and I saw the Junior Senior High School teachers walking around. Very excited and it's nice to see young, young teachers join our workforce. And we have many of them this year and I'll talk about them probably next week, probably because we'll have another meeting coming up. Doc, do you want to add anything to that?
No, so as Superintendent said, today was all building-based, tomorrow will be more of an opportunity for them to meet each other district-wide. We'll have some tech overview for them to learn sort of the platforms that we use for grading and attendance. Their professional development, evaluation, teach point, frontline, how they schedule absences. So some of just the housekeeping types of things, as well as talking to them about the new teacher mentoring program. For all those that are new to the teaching profession, we will assign them with a mentor as closely connected to the position that they hold. We'll have box lunches so that we're adhering to protocols. And then also representatives from the EBEA will also be here to welcome them to the association as well. And Erin Fisher, of course, will be here, sharing with them some of the tech tools and giving them a little bit of a heads up. They'll get their laptops tomorrow, just to, we can give them as much of a head start before the rest of the staff comes back next week. It alleviates some of their worries, so we're looking forward to that tomorrow.
Thank you.
We also was a bit...
Did you find the answer question, have all of the open positions been filled for teaching staff?
Ninety-nine point nine percent, because I did not sign the last teacher today because we just hired this person. We had a principal leave and come late to our principals meeting because they wanted to finish up their interviews. And we are ninety-nine point nine-nine percent, I just couldn't get to them today, we'll probably get to them tomorrow. But yes, we're full. Another new, another new day for us here at the Junior Senior High School, stepping up day today. Or just half of the seventh grade was here today. The seventh grade orientation was here, the guidance department was here, the principals were here, the behavior specialist, Kristi Anderson, talked to the kids. The kids got to take their pictures for their IDs. I can tell you, I tweeted out a few pictures, kids had their face masks on, they were socially distanced. They were going into, I saw that, you know, going into the bathrooms, washing their hands, they got, we gave all the kids face masks. All the students will receive a face mask with a Viking face mask. It's very important for us to see the excited faces. For me, it was nice to see kids back in, back in school. We had, as you know, that the MIA came out, that sports will start on September sixteenth, or September eighteenth. School starts September sixteenth, we'll be talking about that in the upcoming week. Mr. Leonard is, Patrick is working around the clock right now to get us ready to go and talk to our coaches and see where we're at with that. But it was nice to see a lot of activity on campus today, up here and to see the kids. I can tell you, they are excited, they're ready to come back. They were wearing their face masks, they were socially distanced, they understand. They've been home since March thirteenth, they've been with their families, they get it, they get it. I didn't see one child get out of the car without their own face mask on and then they received one of these. So it was fun, I was glad, I was glad to be part of it, we got to see the kids for a few minutes and it's exciting to have the seventh grade back in the building. I got a couple of things, rental space, we're waiting on numbers, so we're sort of in a holding pattern. The cohorts, the Mitchell School went out this afternoon, it was sent home via paper. And tomorrow they should be sent out electronically, the Central School went out today via paper. We're trying to do both because we got some feedback from our parents that some people weren't getting electronically notified, so we decided to do both. The high school, the cohorts have been done, they were trying to mail merge and try to get some things done today. They're going out early tomorrow morning, so we should have the paper in hand by Thursday and Friday of this week. But the Dr. Williams, I think, just got off the phone with Mrs. Tavares, who works, Marion Tavares, who works for our school brain, works on our school brains here. They were working on the mail merge on how to get that out electronically and get the, get the alert for parents so that you understand that here's the cohort, your son or daughter's, and now we can move from there. Which brings me into rental space, if we are looking and looking for more space. I can't say enough about our facilities, our custodian and the help of the East Bridgewater DPW. We really put some fire on these guys about a week ago and said, we've got to have this before and after care room done at the Mitchell School. It has to be done. I was there down to, I've been there last week, two mornings this week, I was there this morning. The HVAC is done, they were troubleshooting this afternoon. The HVAC, they'll troubleshoot tomorrow and Thursday, they told me it'd be cooling it down. So that's really impressive for about a week out. I know it's getting painted, then they'll paint it next week and then the carpets will go down. I spoke to Lisa Verrasso today. She's ready to move into that space, the room next to it will be used as an overflow room and for a remote classroom. If we, for students who will be here on a cohort day that they've already been into classes and then they need a place to go and work. So we have that room and we've also opened up another room at the Mitchell School. So we had another extra space, Dr. Williams will take that room over as well as a remote learning lab or study hall lab. And so we just need those cohort numbers. So as we talked about TJ Smith's last week and we talked about across the street, the church, we're going to just put in a holding pattern right now until I get specific numbers and get accurate numbers. I don't want to go outside the buildings if I don't have to. Just for safety purposes and just the work that is involved in going outside of what we're doing right now. We have some rooms, I know that we'll be, you know, using our libraries and using our STEAM labs and using the extras, the extra spaces we have. We had a few extra spaces at Mitchell School. Dr. Williams discussed them with us and we'll be using those rooms. We don't have a lot of space here at the high school, most of them are taken, Junior Senior High School, but the library is available. And at Central School, I can tell you that Mrs. Byrne has probably used every nook and cranny over at the Central School, including the cafeteria. And that's why the students will be eating in their classrooms, we'll be using the cafeteria for space, a learning space. So at this point, it's just in a holding pattern, it doesn't mean that we won't rent a space, it doesn't mean that we won't move off campus for a before and after care, remote learning option. However, right now, we're in just a holding pattern.
Can I ask a quick question, Liz?
Sure.
The surveys with the task force and everything, we had said fifteen to twenty percent of folks, we were assuming would be completely remote. Is that about where we are now-ish? Okay.
That are remote out of twenty-three hundred?
Yeah.
So yeah, that's what I'm... Yeah. Great. Yeah, I think this building had eighty students maybe, sixty at the Mitchell. Thank you. Yeah, interesting. We've already, in our September meeting, there wasn't a recent homeschooling. In the typical, we had probably, probably ten families who have never homeschooled before that are opting to try homeschooling this year.
But that's still not a lot.
Right.
Well, I think that's a tribute to the plans that everybody's worked on in safety. Can I ask a question about these spaces? When you talk about the remote learning spaces?
Yes.
Are those for students on IEPs or are they for students who...
Well, every student, every student can use those rooms as a remote learning opportunity or before and after care, if it's before and after care or if it's a learning study hall during the day. We're just, we'll be setting those rooms up as, as we move through.
So it's for our students?
Yes.
Then you'll send out whatever to...
The inclusionary model, if there will be, if there will be students with IEPs in a classroom, they will be, it'll be an inclusionary setting. If a student is here on a day that they are not in the cohort, so if they are in cohort A and then their cohort, depending on their IEP and where they would be located in the cohort. If their cohort is cohort A and on cohort B Thursday, Friday, their parents cannot, they needed to have someplace to be. We hope to be able to have the space and to hope to be, help the family out and to keep the student here in a remote study hall classroom. That does not, that does not say that we will have, they may not have an inclusion, it will be overseen by a study hall monitor.
Right.
And they will be told that, Mr. Phelan is on that right now, but there will not be, there won't be...
But any parent will get the opportunity to sign up for that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
If, we're...
Once we know if we have space.
Once we know we have space, our parents, yes, go first, yes. The, we've been working with EBEA on an MOU. We started last week, we had two meetings, this week we started on Monday. We've had great conversations, as you know, we signed our contract a week ago. We then started an MOU on, and really just for the response to the COVID and what we need to do and do things differently. We are in conversations with the, with the union, they've been going well. We have a meeting tomorrow at eleven o'clock. Tim, Dr. Williams and I just got, we worked on our proposal. It has been, it will be emailed to the team. Mrs. Pelosi is probably doing that already right now, we were just changing spelling of a name in there, or a different, using a different name. And then it will be pushed up to the association. And then once it's pushed up to association, I'll have time to look at it today, tonight, tomorrow. Then we'll sit down with the team tomorrow, I hope that we can get through this tomorrow. I hope by Thursday afternoon, Friday morning, we'll have, we'll have it ready to go. Because I really like when our teachers arrive for their orientation via virtual, via in their classrooms, via here back in East Bridgewater Public Schools for the school year twenty twenty-one, that we will have an opportunity to sit with them and discuss, or they'll be back, ready to go and we'll have our protocols and policies in place with them. I think the conversations are going well, I'm pleased with the conversations. I think we're all on the same, we're all on the same plane, there's nobody really so far away from the middle that we can't get to the middle. There is angst, there's anxiousness by myself and my team, our team at the district, there's anxiousness and angst of our teachers, of course, and I'm sure there's anxious, I know there's anxiousness and angst from our community. We're trying to make this safe, we're trying to make it healthy and we're trying to make it academically rigorous for our children as well. So that's where we are on the MOU. Dr. Williams will update us in a minute on the hybrid and where they are and what's going on in that area. But I did want, I did ask, changed John. I asked Brian, to, Brian Kylie, who's our facilities director here at the, at the schools, the liaison between the DPW and the town and us at the school district. We had a air testing done, our HVAC testing done at all three schools, Central, Mitchell and the Junior Senior High School. I did tell you that we have, we have passed with the guidance and, from DESI, from the Department of Health. I know that Brian was with the company that came in, met with the company, walked with the company, talked with the company and discussed. I am not an expert in HVAC, I am not an expert in air exchange or air quality, that's why we brought an expert in. Brian is not an expert, he's the facilities, he's our expert, and so I asked him to be here tonight and just to go over the report and what he knows as of now. So if he wants to just talk about it a little bit and what, what we've seen and what we know.
Sure. Environmental Test Labs did all three schools. Environmental Test Labs, the principal owner is Sam Cohen, they've been doing this for over thirty years. He's an industrial hygienist and currently working with about fifteen other school districts doing the exact same thing. Bottom line, we passed everything in here. Air quality as far as VOCs, mold, small particulates in the air, he tested for all those things. Everything came back good, well within the ranges that are in the industry. The biggest thing was air movement and the air exchanges in any given room. And we made a few modifications in the middle school where ducts were actually blocked by cabinets twenty-five, thirty years ago. Didn't even know they were there. We've exposed them all, we passed all those rooms. In the other two schools, it meets regulation with the systems that we have in place. If you think about the Central School, it's nineteen fifty-one, nineteen sixty-two. It works. The air is safe, the air is clean, I mean, some days it's stagnant, yeah. Like today, I wouldn't have wanted to have been on the third floor of the Central School. But the systems we have in place do work and do function. So we do have air movement, windows are a big factor. This school, the high school, not, not a problem, everything works here. We have a fairly newer system, designed completely differently. Central School, we're dealing with windows from nineteen fifty-one that are three and a half, four feet wide, single pane glass made out of wood frames that have no structural value. We've got about fifty percent of them in each classroom operating, so we could open them. They don't open easily, it might be a two-person job, custodians are on it and we have screens to put in them. So we're doing what we can, it's not like going out and replacing a window in your home, it's not that simple. These windows are, some of them are twenty-four feet high. And back in the day, they were made with different things on them that you can't use these days, so. But overall, we are ready to go. This is crunch week, we got a lot of loose ends to tie up. I'd like to give a shout out to the custodial staff, they've worked a lot of long, hard, hot hours this summer. And I appreciate their dedication. They're ready, ready and willing to go and we will be ready.
Thank you.
Hope to open the doors really soon and get these kids back to school.
Questions for Mr. Kylie?
Tim, I, I told Brian that you were going to probably ask about some air, but if anybody has any questions to ask us about any of the buildings, we have been working and talking on a daily basis. He also meets with John, if there's any other questions that you had, he's here right now, I would just, it's, you know, do you have any questions about the buildings?
These, these reports are thirty pages for each building, they're very detailed, everything's in here. I mean, it's kind of a boring read, but everything's in here.
I read them all. And I have to tell you, I was, I did not expect the air exchange rates that we got. Was those, can I just, and you were there, you may not know, but I assume if you were there, were they windows open or windows closed?
Windows were closed.
Wow, so you opened the windows, it's gonna be even better.
The buildings were not occupied.
That was my biggest concern was windows being able to be open in all the classes. We have close to, around fifty percent of the windows at Central and...
Yes.
More at other schools.
Yes.
That's...
And if you open the windows, that air exchange rate would improve, right?
Yes.
Theoretically?
Yes, but on a day like today?
Oh, no, you wouldn't know, I, no, I get that, but I just, I'm surprised the numbers were as good as they were.
Very, I'm very pleased that they all passed.
And very thorough report, they did a really nice job.
Yes, they did.
I mean, they didn't miss a point?
No. I'm a member of Mass Facilities Administration, it's a statewide organization of facilities directors in schools and towns and we are all dealing with this, I mean, we've been going back and forth for months and it's, every school district is trying to chart these waters that we've never been through before and we're not getting a lot of direction. So it's been very difficult.
What's your biggest facilities issue right now in regards to getting ready to open?
Time.
Yep. Okay.
Just time. It's crunch time and it always gets done, so.
Well, this, we appreciate that, Chris.
Sure.
You got it done quick and it was done very well.
These guys have, have worked a lot of long, hot days and they're getting it done.
Please pass our thanks on to them.
I will.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Have any questions at all, just hang out, email me, email Liz, let me know.
Sure will, thank you.
We'll see everybody in the building next week when we...
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too, stay well.
Thank you. Trying to make it as, they have been long days, I know that it's long for everybody else, but I do want to have Dr. Williams just give us an update on, we met with our principals today. This is not easy for the principals as well and we've continued to say that and the custodians have done a great job. My central office has done an outstanding job, they continue to stay in this fight and this game as, as long as we can here. The principals have been here almost every day over the summer, can't say enough about the principals. They were here today for three hours with us, going over a lot of things that need to be summed up. The biggest thing was the cohorts and, and some things about remote learning and being, you know, in-person learning. What are we, what are we talking about, what does it look like? And Dr. Williams sort of led us through that today, we had some great conversation. I can tell you that all three principals are on the same page. To me, that's, that's for us, and central office makes it much easier when even though pre-K through twelve are different ages and different developmentally, it's nice to hear three principals talking the same language and rowing in the same direction. So I'll let Dr. Williams just hit us on a couple of points that, just to bring us up to date from what you told us last week to now and where we are with that kindergarten, please.
Yep. So on the logistical side, we have identified those students that'll be working fully remote. So that then allowed the principals to determine the cohorts, making sure that they weren't over capacity in any room. So at this time, as the superintendent mentioned, the cohorts have been established and communication is going out to parents. It wasn't as easy with school brains to merge that information and have it go out through an email. So in the meantime, those are being mailed out because as the superintendent said, we have over the summer received calls from people who have not been receiving emails. So a hard copy has gone out as well as an electronic copy will go out. Attached to that letter that has the cohort, we're also asking for additional information. One, transportation, even those that have already paid for transportation, if there's a willingness for them to drive their students to school, that will help because the next thing is for us to then look at capacity on the buses. Also on there is if they need before and after care on the in-person days and if they're looking for supervision for their children on the remote days. And as the question came up about our students with special needs, we do have a priority list. Those students with high levels of need will be prioritized first for extra seats in the in-person days. But certainly looking at repurposing spaces so that we can accommodate as many families as we can who will be working. So we're really encouraging families who have students in the hybrid model to fill out those forms because it will dictate a lot of the things going forward for us to identify how we can serve the needs of, of the parents and the students. So I'm hoping that by the beginning of next week, we will start giving out some information to families about how we can help them. So that's the logistical side, a lot of our conversation today with the, the principals was also talking about the teaching and learning side of the hybrid model and really getting clear expectations, not only for staff, but for our parents and students. And, and keeping that consistency across the district, taking into account the developmental levels of students. That we want to be very clear about what parents and students can expect for times that they should be live during the day or during each class period and what the expectations will be on the full remote learning day so that nobody's wondering, you know, should they be on, shouldn't they be on? And we are requiring that it is consistent across a grade level and it's consistent across like courses. So the expectation should not be different from one room to the next. Parents can expect that if they have twins, that the delivery is the same of the skills that are being taught and keeping them consistent with the students who are at home versus the students who are in person. I think I mentioned to you last week, we are, and parents of kindergarten students have been notified, that's been a big worry for us as far as kindergarten age students being remote for full days. So we did move to an AM PM model, kind of the old model of kindergarten, where we will have a cohort A for AM and a cohort P for PM so that every kindergarten student has in-person time every day. I think I mentioned as well, the YMCA wants to partner with us. So we're really focusing our efforts on our kindergarten students for the possibility for them to have a second half of their day at the YMCA focused more on play-based learning for our students. Because that's a piece that's kind of really be missed when we only have our kindergarten students for half-day. The teachers will focus specifically on content instruction and then hopefully we can partner with the YMCA to offer those play-based opportunities knowing that that's the expertise of, of our staff members at the... knowing that that's the expertise of our staff members at the YMCA. And then preschool is as planned. We have, you know, the numbers low enough in preschool so that we can get the safe distancing and have our preschool programs operate just as parents intended them to in a traditional year. Yep, we have half-day students, yep, full-day students, three days a week, five days a week, whatever parents have requested.
Is the YMCA currently open?
Yes.
It is. So are there any issues with separating kids from others, sanitizing, security, anything?
So when we talk to Joe Leva, the director at the YMCA, right now, it's the summer programming that's going on, and that will continue until school starts. But they are well aware that if they are going to offer things for our kids, they will have to keep them by cohort as well. And they've been going through the sanitation protocols all summer long, because they were an emergency daycare center. So they're fully prepared for that, and they're also aware that they would need to maintain students in the same cohorts if they were going to host them here as well.
Okay, great.
Gina, do you think we'll do more project-based learning to get kids through some of the remote days?
Yes, I mean, that's the hope. I mean, even like along with the universal design for learning, you know, we certainly want to have those in-person days build upon what students can be expected to do on the remote days. We are still encouraging synchronous learning every single day for students who are remote, but certainly having opportunities for project-based learning, as well as Google has a new extension coming out where we can do breakout rooms, so students could be working in small groups on projects and activities through Google meets as well.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah.
I mean, I do see the value in it, in project-based learning. At the point we're at.
As far as the cohort, I know this is something I thought about a lot, as you mentioned, and I'm sure other people might be wondering. It's not so easy just saying we're gonna have cohort A and cohort B. I mean, there has to have been a lot of planning and evaluation that's been put into that, and I know, in order to appreciate it, it might be helpful for us to understand, you know, what went into it, because I feel as though, you know, everyone's like, okay, we need to be cautious of this, and then we're upset, but there's not a real understanding or appreciation, especially for, you know, the building principals having to sort through this, and also think about, you know, siblings and other considerations that have been brought forth. Can you give us any hard insight?
So it really did start with identifying those students who have siblings in other buildings. And so the administrators had a shared spreadsheet where they could identify, and actually it was central school that started, and said, these are the students in our buildings that have siblings at the Mitchell School, at the junior/senior high schools. So then Mr. Gentile and Mr. Sylvia could then specifically look at those students. I think at an earlier meeting, we had mentioned, you know, if families have specific requests about, you know, a neighbor who's gonna be helping to work with students on remote days, so we did take all of those, and I believe we were able to, for the most part, accommodate all of those, so that was factored in. And then looking at the balance. I mean, it's not as, I shouldn't say it's not as difficult, it's extremely challenging at the high school when you have students moving through four different classes every day, as opposed to self-contained classrooms where you're just looking for the split. So, you know, it was kind of a miracle that they were able to get it done. Whenever they said, you know, we think we're good, we think we've got it. At the junior/senior high school, there is a little bit of an imbalance, however, the rooms are still at the capacity. So, for example, they can have 18 students in a class. On one cohort day, there could be 17 students, and the other cohort could have maybe seven. So, you know, if we started to get too particular with like trying to create that balance of, you know, the 12 and 12, or we would have thrown student schedules off. So we wanted to be mindful of that, and knowing that we're adhering to those, you know, still the distancing that needed to happen. So, yes, there was a lot of work and a lot of moving parts that needed to be considered, and I'm crossing my fingers that transportation is not gonna throw another glitch into that plan, but the building principals, they worked so well together, because it did. They needed to rely on each other and how they could make sure siblings all stayed together. Even in a couple instances that parents wanted siblings separated so that they didn't have the whole family home on the same day. So, you know, it was great that parents came forward sooner rather than later, so we could factor those in. We're prepared that there may be some additional calls that come in when people find out their cohorts. I even have a child at home that was talking about, you know, which friend he can be with and whether changes will happen. I would encourage people not to ask for those types of changes, and just, you know, think for brighter days ahead when they'll all be back together again, because like I said, you know, one change does have a domino effect. And at this point in time, you know, the cohorts are working and still adhering to keeping family members together and being mindful of the balance of the numbers, so.
I will say on behalf of sure of everyone here, and the general parent community, there's a lot of appreciation for all the hard work that administration, the building principals, put into this from the beginning. So I, I think that's a real, real note of appreciation for all of you, so thank you.
No, they deserve it. I mean, and a lot of times, you know, sometimes we say, you know, oh, maybe it would have been easier to go fully remote. We just know it's so important for these students to be back in the buildings, and whatever it took for us to work that out so that we can gradually get them back in a safe manner, we were willing to put that time in.
And then I have, I do have one follow-up question, and this may be more appropriately asked a little later, but especially at the high school level, with the way the cohorts have kind of been built, do you anticipate changes to, or significant changes to any of the schedules that were developed in June, or is everything?
Yeah, no, the schedules are as planned
Okay.
in June. I believe they even looked at the second half of the year too, so they accounted for those semester courses that change.
Several conversations with Andrew in the last couple weeks, and, you know, with their number of kids they have, I can't imagine the number of things they're juggling, but for them to take the time out to listen to and consider every family's situation, because every family is struggling with something this small. And it would have been very easy to say, we'll do the best we can, but to listen and to take that into consideration, I know that means a lot to these families in this town.
Gina, do we still have capacity for people to come from remote into hybrid?
So yes, that is something that we will need to accommodate. So those students that are fully remote, we haven't assigned them a cohort at this point in time, but if they are requesting at any point in time, then, you know, we ask that they be flexible in giving us a timeframe to get them into a
But do we have capacity?
We do.
Oh, we do? Okay, good.
And like I said, you know, that example of, you know, 17 in one cohort and maybe only seven in another. So there are spaces. It just may mean, they may not be in the cohort with the alphabetical end of their
They might not get the flexibility
Right. Yep, but the intent is that they come back, and they come back working with the teachers that they've worked with, their teachers that they have worked with from the beginning.
So I asked John tonight to join us as well. We're not really, you know, we have the financials, but I think it's, I think it's important for, we passed out what we've been spending on some of the relief to our overall budget, and the Plymouth County Cares Act that I gave you out last week on that, on the sheets that we sent out, but I think John wanted to just review a little bit, and I know that people had some questions for him, and to maybe just go through it, and I think he was just gonna give an overview tonight. We gave you out that information last week at the meeting. If you remember, I probably should have said, bring it again, but I think John's just gonna go through it briefly if you have any questions on it. Still at about $600,000 left from what we've had. I will say this, that John and that, on the, on the finance portion, or the finance department of the district, they have been feverishly moving, rapidly calling places and getting PPEs here, finding out where we can get something. If we can't find it with WB Mason, or we can't find it with one of the companies that we're dealing with, they're really doing a terrific job, and we've gotten, we've asked the principals, what do you need? And they call, and we're getting it for them. It's important for people to understand that we're going as fast as we can. You know, John has been working trying to get, you know, Chromebooks in. You've heard that they've been stuck on ships. You've been heard that we can't get them in from China, or India, or wherever they've been being made, and they're stuck in some shipyard someplace and can't get in due to COVID. But right now, our laptops are in for our teachers. Our instructional assistants have asked for, you know, can they get something? We do have enough Chromebooks for them. That's because John and his staff were ordering last year and continue to order, and we keep getting shipments in. You know, over, I think over 60,000 face masks are here. So I mean, all the things that we do behind the scenes to support what we're trying to get done in front of the scenes, I think is a credit to finance, a credit to the curriculum instruction aspect of the district. But I can tell you, within 15 minutes, and I don't think people realize how quickly this is going. Within 15 minutes yesterday, I came out of my office just to find out if we had gotten hold of a few items that we were looking for specifically for the principals have asked for, and some accommodations that teachers needed. We spent $46,000 within 15 minutes. It probably was spent in about four minutes, but Mrs. Benner had to make sure that the company could take a PO, so it took maybe a little bit of minute, a couple of minutes to send the email, get the email back, have John say, yes, go, and go. Calling around to three or four companies and saying, we need this by yesterday. Can you get it here tomorrow by 9:00 a.m.? And we'll pay an extra shipping charge to get it here, because we need to make an accommodation, whether it's for a child, or whether it's for a teacher, or a staff member, or custodian, or whoever. So they've done their, they're doing their due diligence. They're working really hard, but just so that people know, I mean, yeah, we've got $1.2 million from Plymouth Cares Act money here in East Bridgewater. The town has been very good to us. We've been working with them. It goes quickly, though. So within 15 minutes, and then today, that was yesterday at, I don't know, 10:00 a.m., John, or 10:00 or 10:30? Or maybe it was 1:00 or 1:30. It was 15 minutes of $46,000. They probably spent that this morning, doing some other things. You know, cameras came up today. Dr. Williams has asked now for cameras for, and tripods for classrooms that do not have them. Those are things that, you know, we have some. How many more do we need? We gotta have them. We get it from one side, goes to the other, and then we push it. So it's going very quickly, so if anybody thinks when we come up here, I say, last week we had $600,000, I'm sure that John's gonna say, geez, Liz, we're down to $300,000 today. I just didn't get to you. You might hear that tonight. I don't know, because we haven't spoke, we've only spoken
You will.
maybe about two seconds today, but it's going quickly, just so you know. So I just wanted to get that out so that when people are watching from home, or people from watching from here, it's not, it's quick, so. Thanks, John.
Sure.
So briefly, the town has available from the Plymouth County Cares Act of $1,336,000, and that's for the whole town. As of August 18th, the town has submitted expenses, and at August 18th, we had a balance of $646,000. Now, I know they only submitted a couple hundred thousand expenses for the school, and right now we are up to $450,000. So I'm estimating that that $646 is probably down to about $400,000, $375,000 right now. I think, I think we've done a good job with PPE. We've got, like Liz said, we've got about 50,000 face masks. We've got thousands and thousands of shields. We've got more gallons of sanitizer than probably some hospitals in the area have. So we're, we're trying to keep up, and we're trying to make sure we have enough. We definitely have enough to start. And we've been pretty good at finding companies that are still able to supply this equipment. Joanne and I are still bound by procurement rules, so it's, I mean, you see the advertisements out there on some of the things they're trying to sell for hundreds and hundreds of dollars over market that we just, we can't do, because we're not, we're not allowed to, so. We're abiding by procurement rules, and we've got some pretty good companies we work with that are still supplying our supplies. A couple other things, I filed and received approval for the ESSER grant. That's the Elementary and Secondary Education Emergency Relief. So that's $153,000. So that is for any expenses in 2021 that we would need related to remote learning and COVID. I also filed a remote learning and technology grant, which we got approved for, and that's for $14,847. And that will cover the hotspots for families that need hotspots, and probably about $5,000 of additional electronic equipment if we need it.
Who was that grant through? Was that a Plymouth County thing?
No, the
State?
Federal, I think Yeah, the federal really supplied it to the state, but
So that was above and beyond Plymouth County money that's
Above and beyond, yep.
Great.
If you have any questions on supplies, I'm happy to
So I have one, and this may not be directly yours to answer, but so I think I've heard from many more than a few elementary or middle school parents who are wondering if their children are gonna be able to bring their Chromebooks back and forth this fall with the hybrid model to help complete their work better. I didn't know if that falls into having adequate supply, or working supply, or where we stand on that.
Well, we are one-to-one, so we have a Chromebook for every student.
And we're prepared to have them leave the building with it, I guess, is what I was
That would be the expectation. The conversation has come up about, you know, training them to properly sanitize them when they come back into the room, and also some conversation about covers for them to make them a little bit more durable in the transport.
Right.
So we're gonna ask the parents to provide covers to our
Well, we've looked into, we've looked into covers to get a protective cover for every Chromebook in the district. You're looking at about $200,000, so. Whether we do it for the kindergarten and the first graders, we probably should do it for the older kids.
Seventh and eighth graders.
To be honest with you. The first graders and kindergartners probably take better care.
Sure.
I just wanna say thank you to John. I served on the facilities subcommittee with him, and the level of detail him and, he and Joanne went through in finding PPE, ordering PPP, the supplies, I mean, the detail that he provided with what we had, so we felt comfortable moving forward with the whole plan was just really well done. And
Thank you.
He deserved a lot of credit for that, John, because not only was it a lot of work, I'm sure it was very tedious work.
I give Joanne all the tedious work.
Well, thank you, Joanne. It was much appreciated.
Any questions, John?
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, is there anything else?
No, I think, you know, if there's any questions that you had burning, you know, I still say, please email us or call me. I will tell you this, I do, I do want to put a plug in this evening. If any parent is looking for a part-time position, or any community member looking for any part-time position, we're looking for COVID monitors to ride the buses, COVID monitors to help us in the hallways, and to just to do some movement, but we're also looking for COVID monitors, or COVID relief monitors, I guess that's what we're calling them, because this will be paid for out of those funds, to help us deliver the lunches at the central school, because lunches will be into the classroom. We're trying to limit people walking around and limit the number of people going back and forth, and I know it sounds like a lot that I'm saying, hey, I need people to come in, but if we have someone that's a regular in here every day, knowing that they're coming in at 9:30 and leaving at 11:00, it works for us, and it, sometimes it does work for, I got off the phone today with a mom who has a kindergarten, a kindergarten child, and would love to deliver lunches for us, and can certainly help out, and it was great, and they're willing to do that. and they're willing to do that. So, those are the types of things that we're looking for. It doesn't have to be every day, it could be the days that their children are in the cohort. It could be, I'll ride the buses, because my kids are taking the buses, so I might as well ride the bus, and once they get off, I'll stay on the bus, you know, for the three tiers. But those are things that we are looking for. I have posted them, they are on school spring, so if people are up on school spring, please look it up, they are posted. But I did want to put that out, and I'll probably be putting it out on the, on our website, we just didn't get to that today with school spring. We have hired an additional 2.5 custodians to help in support. We've had some retirements in the last couple of weeks, as you know, and we have, those custodians are leaving, and they have left. We have John Roback, we'll do some, we'll talk about him in another week, and then we also have someone that will be leaving in November, but they have come through, and as you know, we spoke about some COVID relief on that as well when we were moving forward. We've hired for those positions, we've hired a .5 to support, and we also will be hiring more if more people do apply. We're trying to keep up. Some people, some people, one person told us today that, you know, this was terrific, because trying to find a job now is really difficult, because everybody's working, and there is work out there, but now it's, a lot of positions are filled. So, but we are still always working, looking for part-time, and we're looking for support. Really, at this time, I know that some parents want to come in and volunteer and give their time. I'd prefer at this time that we don't have volunteers in the classroom at this time, but if they certainly, if they want to work for two days in a cohort, and come in on Monday, Tuesday, and we can supply that and support that, not only fiscally, monetarily, but also with a Cory check, and also making sure it's the same person, with the same cohort, on the same days, on a weekly basis. So, I just wanted to push that out, that we are, we're full, but we need more people, we need more hands on deck that can work for the district and not just, volunteering is great, and we love it. I know that, you know, Ellen, you did so many years at the Mitchell School, and you did even in the Alexia Lab at Central, but it's very difficult for us right now, and we appreciate it, and we thank our community, but hold on to that, and if they can help, that would be great, but-
So, looking at where we're at now in terms of staffing versus where we were when we passed the budget in the spring, and we're obviously, our needs are very different than what we anticipated. So, I think, I would feel like I'd benefit, and I'm sure the committee would agree, from maybe the next time we meet, could we get some kind of a spreadsheet that just lists what have we done since June 1st?
I have that spreadsheet, and it's sitting right next to Barbara. She's probably listening to this meeting right now. There was one teacher left.
Sure.
I didn't, you know, there was one teacher left, and I wanted to do it all at once.
Sure, that's fine.
So, that all of our F.T.s are up there, all of the staffing, and the ISAs are up there. We have a couple of full-time subs, or yearly subs, that are here that'll be a full-time position due to whatever, and I want them to be named, but we are full. There's been no extra positions added.
Sure.
We've filled positions, we haven't added positions. What was in the budget is what has been allocated and what we've stayed with. The only things that we are adding are these part-time positions right now through that COVID relief or Response Act money, Plymouth County Cares, and trying to get just the support for our students and the teachers. You know, if we can limit the teachers being out in the hallways, and limit the teachers moving, with a few extra hands in the hallway moving, we're going to try to-
That'd be great. I mean, I think we'd all love to just, you know, get a closer look at what you're doing to make sure the schools can run efficiently, and-
If I, if I had that teacher, and if I had signed her today, you would have had that right here, but you'll have it next Tuesday if we meet.
Good, thank you.
That's all we got on the school level, or district level.
Thank you. All right, so moving on to action items, we have a few. Nope. I don't. Nope, sorry, yours, mine just got pushed over to the second page. All right, I would take a motion to approve the minutes from the school committee meetings of August 6, 2020, and August 18, 2020.
I'm moved.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Trista abstains from August 18th.
Approves August 6th.
Thank you. Second motion to approve accounts payable warrants 77 S.V. dated 8/12/2020 and 9 S.V. dated 8/26/2020.
I'm moved.
Moved by Teresa. Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Take a motion to approve payroll 8 P.S. dated 8/19/2020.
I'm moved.
Moved by Teresa. Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Take a motion to approve, after review, the FY '21 East Bridgewater Junior-Senior High School Student Parent Handbook.
I'm moved.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Amanda. Any questions about that? I know this is something we've pushed off since the spring.
We have a version of it.
Not an updated one, we're still going, am I correct in that? We're still going with the one that was presented, and there may be an addendum for our consideration the next time we meet based on COVID policies.
Okay, so the one that was presented a while ago, I had met with the principal, and he made some changes to it, but I don't know if he added anything since that time.
It was recent, I want to say the first week in August, three weeks ago, yeah, first week in August, I think, by Barbara. So, that would be the version that we were based on.
I think it's right after you met with him.
Okay.
Other questions?
I'll have to resend it, but there is an addendum, and we'll be across the district, and that's why we're just waiting.
Sure. But for now, we're going to move on, take action on the one that's in front of us, and then consider changes in the future. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would take a motion to approve the, oh, we did that, okay, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, to approve payment of the school crossing guard salary from the transportation fees revolving account for the 2021 school year.
I'm moved.
Just moved by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other business before we move to close? Motion to close the meeting.
I'm moved.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Ah, Trista beat you. Second by Trista. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Stay well, everyone.